Lord Jesus, I've come to you this evening with just with thanks and praise and ask Lord Jesus, as we sat down to discuss our community's situations that we would first and foremost, put you and then our community and all the patrons. I'd ask that you would just watch over us, be with us in all our decisions. I'd ask that thy will would be done and that we would diligently contemplate, think out, and plan to make our community the absolute best that we can. So again, Lord Jesus, watch over us, be within our thoughts, our words, our actions, so that we can be glorified to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ron. You guys want to take a minute, look at the minutes from the previous meeting?
Hey, I'm in the city council meeting right now. Yeah. Alright, okay, love you, bye. I was told to have fun at a city council meeting.
You don't?
It's gonna be good.
Entertained a motion deal.
I'll make a motion we accept minutes as printed.
A motion and a second to accept the minutes as printed, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Why don't we move? Huh?
So yeah, we need to adjust the order.
Well, let's be the quickest. Sam, you wanna come visit with us or do you just?
I just wanted to ask the Green State license for the store.
Is that, is that all you wanted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You didn't have any other issues you wanted to visit with us about?
Yep, just renew for another year.
Well, that being the case, entertain a motion to approve dealer's retail license, cereal malt beverages for Hometown Convenience Store, 116 North Main Street.
I still move to accept.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve a retail license for cereal malt beverage for Hometown Convenience Store. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Yes, sir, there you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if they're all that easy.
Anyway, Steven, you wanna come visit with us?
Uh, yeah, I just kinda was gonna say about the truck we had parked out here. I know you stopped and visited with me out one day. We just bought a bunch of furniture and different household goods. The only question I really have is in the semi truck parking thing, it said it can be parked there as long as maybe necessary to unload and load. And so I guess that's just kinda my question if ever in the future we were to move or to.
Yeah, well. I, I read it too and I, they're, they're, I don't think it's far stretched for them just, that their intent is that truck shows up, unloads, departs. And I can understand what you're saying where you were.
Well, and I feel kinda like if it said U-Haul or something on the side, it kind of, everyone would look at it differently, you know what I mean, like?
Yeah, but you don't know, I've seen any U-Hauls that big.
No.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, there's.
Those are Penske's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a, you know, if it's a moving truck, I feel like it's kinda different. So I guess maybe that's something that kinda just needs.
But there again, if it's a semi, I mean, it needs to be a semi or a fairly large truck.
Yeah.
You know, whether it was a moving truck, like say, you know,
I guess, yeah.
United Van Line shows up and unloads somebody, usually they don't sit there for several days, you know what I mean? Might take a few hours, but I can understand that. So, uh, do you foresee you need to do that again or?
Not in the near future, it's just kind of something that, you know. I went out the morning to W. L. D., and the officer was out there getting ready to write a ticket for it. And it's like, you know, getting furniture and stuff, it's not like.
Right.
No, I'm a truck driver and I just parked it up for them.
Well.
So Steve, how long had it been there, like 24?
No, it probably took them for what, eight days, nine days?
Okay.
But I said, I mean, it's not like we could just rush everything in in, you know, a couple hours either.
Well, the only alternative, you know, bring it in when you need to and find some place to spot it when you're not. In all honesty, I guess the reason the officer showed up, because I think I talked to you on Friday?
I think he talked to me, I thought it was, I don't know, I thought it was on Monday or Tuesday. Cause we left Thursday morning and then I think it was that same week. I think he talked to me at the beginning of the week.
Actually, I thought I talked to you Friday.
I'm not for sure.
And it was still, it was still there Monday. So, did he write you a ticket?
No.
Well, uh.
So basically, it's a misunderstanding?
Well, yeah, I just.
Or not an understanding?
I mean, in a sense, it was there as long as maybe necessary to unload, cause we couldn't unload it all right at once. And I guess just to save someone else's future headache, you know, whatever came up again. Not that necessarily would, but.
I know when Jason drove, he had, he couldn't park it. I mean, he had to park it off, so I mean, I don't.
Well, like I said, I just, it's different, I think, if we were actually unloading here. I feel like it would have done more damage if we left and, you know, drove the truck in and out every single day, you know?
Well.
And Steve, this, this isn't gonna be an all the time deal?
No. Yeah, well, I said, I'm not saying that necessarily for myself right now. I mean, we don't have any future plans, it's just to save someone else's headache or.
Now, Steve, was it like a 52-foot box trailer? Okay.
I'm gonna bring up one thing and the reason, one of the reasons I, other reasons I thought we should look at the ordinance is in regards to section three, where it discusses punished by a fine of not less than $10, but no more than $100. If you're gonna review it, I just think that should be a flat rate. I don't understand how it can be.
Oh, how there's different gradients.
Right, like are you more guilty of leaving the truck there or not?
Do you have degrees of guilty?
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just saying like to me, it should just be like either that's the finer, it's not.
Flat being, yeah.
I think it's a strange, just a thought, we just have to review it.
I don't know.
No, it's a good point, and neither is the business.
Right, either you're, either.
But you're, you're not advocating that we change anything?
It's not necessarily, I'm just like applying it to things. And, and I, I want to say too, like it wasn't a disrespect to you or anything, it was a, a kind of.
I understand, just, right. We really haven't had much problem because there, a number of years ago, they hit it really hard. And, well, like, like Rhonda said, that's why Jason's truck sits where it does. Like wing trap, why they had that set up back after that.
Or, I mean, I know he talked to ringlers and sometimes Jason have to park it down here, so.
I used to park mine north side of the depot when it was farther south there.
And if I understand it correctly, it's just because the weight messes with the roads, right? I mean, that's what my.
Bidding under the, under the asphalt.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to understand.
Especially if they're loaded, they, they sit on a soft street, they can.
They'll sink.
At ours, at ours it's good.
They can leave a lasting impression. And then like winter time, you know, you get, you get a freeze thaw, freeze thaw. Throw some moisture in, things can change rather abruptly. So was that the only thing you wanted to visit with us about? Okay.
And Steve, like if that situation arises, maybe sometime in the future, and you know that, you know, it could potentially have to sit there multiple days, just if you could come communicate with us, talk to us?
Well, I had no idea there was even any, you know, ordinance or anything like that, so.
That's what I wondered, if it was, if it was just a lack, not, I don't know where.
Yeah, I didn't know until he came to visit at this place.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
So did you find any treasures in there?
Quite a few.
Did you really?
The first box we opened had a big, had a bunch of money and bottom a bunch of old coin collections.
Are you serious?
I'm dead serious.
That's honest, this wouldn't be wrong.
Score?
Yeah, that's what I'd be saying, no joke.
I don't know, did you clean up some storage lockers or something?
They had an auction of two houses, they sold all the stuff, all the furniture and kitchen stuff. And they still look like buying it, and we just bought all of them, so.
Wow.
Do you wanna visit about the dealership issue?
Not right now, we're not, we're not sure what we're doing yet, so.
What's up to you?
I guess it's kind of a, not a, not really, I said, we're not sure what we're doing it yet, and it may or may not be in town. We at some point wanna have a used car dealership. And I'm not saying salvage yard or anything like that, I'm saying used car.
Sure.
Think it could help a lot. One thing with having the dealer's license is we can do like title reassignments and stuff, which I know that's another part of why there's a lot of junk vehicles that sit around town, cause you can't, they can't reassign titles once someone signs it. You know, one wants to go and tag it in their name and wait six weeks and.
Right, yeah, but.
In order to do that, the city has to agree that we're in compliance before we can even file and apply for that. So, to have a used car dealership though, technically be not in compliance because you have vehicles sitting on a lot that aren't tagged and insured. Although, having the dealer's license, you can, with your dealer's tag, you can get in any of them and drive them and they're all covered by your insurance.
Right, they're, they're fully operable.
It's, it's kind of a catch 22, I guess.
Well, obviously, it's a different type of situation. And I think, just speaking for myself, you know, I'm all for encouraging, you know, businesses and stuff, it just, you know, any good proprietor like, like Angie's would like a good looking situation, you know, that's, that's our concern, it doesn't turn into an eyesore.
Yeah.
So.
Though I say, Steve, I'd love to see you do it though, just saying, just saying.
Well, I think the, the, there's no one.
Audi or BMW or what?
Do what?
Audi, BMW, Lexus.
Volvo.
Well, if you get to that point and you wanna come visit with us, probably true.
Yeah, we'd love to talk to you on that one.
Okay.
Alright.
And thank you for coming, Tony. We appreciate this a ton.
I'll do the rest for you and go home.
I don't have much to talk about, I'm gonna be a bit, you wanna talk to me?
Well, why don't you do it too?
I have 34 pages here.
Do what?
Isn't it four pages here?
Is there? Little for me? Well, I haven't been here very much, last month I've been elsewhere and there's never enough daylight. I was thinking, I just, I was hearing the spotlight that might freak people out, so.
It might, might start talking.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I haven't even turned any hours in for like the last two months, so everything I've done has been just, you know, phone calls with a couple people that were problematic there, just keeping tabs on them. I will say that there are a couple little problem areas that are kinda popping up, but kinda disappointed that they're coming back, but I'll address them when I get time here, so.
Vehicular issues?
Yeah. But I, on, on the flip side, you know, they're up north end of town there, I still think, there's some, again, there's some, there's some change again, so.
It's constant change.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, there's some that were gonna be on a couple months ago, and now they are. I haven't looked around to see where they are or anything, but I don't.
The only thing that bothers me is when they park the trucks and you can't see. I mean, that's, you know, they'll park them and you can't see who, the traffic that's coming from the north, or from the south, sorry.
Oh, just blocking the.
Have you had?
On the highway, on the, on the.
They'll park it just like headed east or something, and then you can't.
Be too far back.
Yeah, and you can't, you gotta pull out and pull out.
Especially if it's like a semi in that drive.
Well, that's what I mean, it's usually a semi.
Isn't the K-dog regulated though?
Well, they've stopped that.
Right? Because they have, they have regs for, you know, intersections and for blind spots.
Yeah, K-dog does.
But if it's ever, if it's an issue, just somebody call me and I'll just make that phone call or stop in. And I, I'll just tell them next time I talk to them, make sure they're so far back from the corner or something.
Well, I don't know if they understand that or not, but they know that, I would think that they would be aware of it. That's the street that I use, so, yeah.
Well, you had occasion to engage on what one you and I talked about, push a little harder on.
The one south of there?
Yeah.
Those are all tagged with current registration stickers now. And I've been told they're all insured. And I've been told that, um, that's as much as I'm gonna get told. That, um, I'd like to see you try to, I mean, basically that, uh, they're not gonna, he's not, no one's gonna go out there and start them or prove to you that they run. How about that?
Okay.
That's kinda the way I was, he said, you know, yep, I'll put all the current stickers on them and, and if I have that sticker, that should prove that I have current, you know, they're legally tagged and I'm paying my property taxes and that's as far as I'm gonna go. Well, the ordinance is actually about appearance, so if they appear that they're operable, that helps. But I would appreciate knowing for sure if they run or not. And he said, nope, not gonna tell you, not gonna prove it.
Okay, we'll talk about this more later.
I was gonna say, but by no means you weren't threatened or anything?
Oh, no, no, absolutely not, no, 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 there's nothing like that at all. Said that's not, doesn't feel like you should have to do that.
So from afar, do they appear to be functional?
Four tires, windows?
Yeah, yeah, that part of it, yeah, I would question the fact that, you know, they've sat there for, ever since I've been here, several of them haven't moved an inch in several years. I don't know if, I have no idea. You know, unfortunately, you know, the, the purpose of, of the ordinance is to remedy some of that situation and, I don't know, I don't know if it'd be a.
Well, maybe not being willing to clarify the situation and answer the questions, kind of an in-your-face attitude. I don't know what the rest of you think.
Well, he specifically told me that I could invite the mayor to personally speak with him if he felt that he should do something different. He said as far as, as far as he and I were concerned, that's as far as he's gonna go. Can prove by appearance that they were, that he had insurance and had the right to tag it on. And said that, that was definitely.
Okay. Any comments from anybody else? Is that a comment? Well, we'll delve into it as the weather improves.
Right, right.
So, nothing else? Okay. Well, I guess.
No, I don't think, I mean, I talked to Steve a little bit the other day and here he is, so that's why, thank you for coming, I appreciate that, that's good, so, what else to talk about, so.
Anything else on properties or?
No, nothing that, I mean, nothing I think anybody needs to worry about anyway. Just the same, couple little things. I mean, like I said, there are a few problem areas that are out there right now that need taking care of, I will say that. When I get some daylight, I'll, I'll, I'll get them. Couple, a couple others, people have some stuff sitting out that didn't take care of. That kinda thing. While, while here, do you wanna talk about?
Were you, were you here when we were talking about unattended trailers?
Well, I mean, I was talking to you earlier.
Unattached?
Right. No, I mean, I wasn't here to talk about the meeting, no.
Well. I still didn't understand what you said.
I was just wondering, are the, are the trailers in the, in the ordinance, yeah?
No, actually, that's, that's something we need to talk about is that, at least to my understanding, there is no wording in the ordinance concerning an unattached trailer.
In the, in 16-2, in that ordinance? Cause that's, that's dealing with operable vehicles, motor vehicles.
Right.
Once it had it.
Yeah, there's no trailer.
Once had an engine or something, so that's what.
Right.
I mean, I would cite, if somebody had flat tires on a trailer, I would, I could cite them through that ordinance, I would think. I mean, and, you know, alright, let's go with this one, I would cite them through that ordinance, whether.
Like I say, I know that we've been kinda behind the eight ball for a number of years on that issue. Pretty well knew that there really wasn't a verbatim ordinance against an unattached trailer.
Correct.
And like I said earlier, you know, summertime, somebody hits a boat, you know? That's one thing, but, well, actually though.
But boats have also, there's been that issue too.
We've had some issues like when we wanted to spray the streets. You know, this past summer. Either, well, vehicles and all. But the idea of being, you know, like we were talking earlier, when, when we need to grade snow off the streets, it'd be nice if we had the least amount of vehicles.
Right.
Probably gets really aggravating when you got a, a unhooked boat sitting there. So, whether or not we wanna either make another ordinance or revise one or something, we'll have to talk about it. If you wanna give it some thought, excellent.
Yeah, I think I might do, just do a quick canvas and see where, see exactly what we've got here and where we're at. And, you know, then again, you're still talking. You know, I don't know. That's, I mean, that's, I don't know, that's tough, I don't know, I'll look at some other communities maybe and see what they've done, but, you're talking about.
You know, just, I guess.
Telling people they can't park something on a public street.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if it doesn't, you know what I mean?
Well, for extended periods of days, I mean, I, I.
Well, I mean.
Or can you just spray or something, you just have to, it's almost like a.
Well, it's about the same thing though, like when plowing snow and the grader comes along, it's like, well, it'd be nice if that boat wasn't sitting there.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could always, well, but if you're gonna plow every street, you can't do like the emergency snow route thing, you know, there's like communities that do that, obviously. Where they plow certain streets.
Another thing that comes to mind is, how many, how many places do you have, like where you have to stay out in the street because of overhanging trees?
Way more than our vehicles.
Quite a few.
There was at least three, if not four, where Bush whacked the cab or I knew better than I went around the, you know, where there's some, needs to be cut back. And it could be done.
And I would say, cause you're gonna go on that route, I would do the, you know, talking about clearance over public right of ways, you know, usually you see that 12 to 14 foot clearance over public right of ways, then throw the sidewalk clearance in there too, throw an eight foot sidewalk clearance in, other communities do that. I mean, it's an issue if, if you don't have an ordinance like that and somebody's walking down the street and there's a bunch of overgrowth, they push their kid out into the street to go around and get hit by a car, it's his fault. City at fault because they didn't, you know, you have a, you have a public right of way that you don't enforce an ordinance on.
But.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned that.
But there are, you know, I've seen similar ordinances to that, you know, streets and alleys are covered.
I've found a couple places you can't even drive with a pickup.
You're right.
On the street.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Or you absolutely can't stay on your lane in the right side, you have to go clear.
Right.
So you have anything else, Steve? I'll try to, I'm trying to. I'm not here, I haven't been here very much at all.
Well, we're still keeping on them.
I should be here, I should be here more, I'm gonna drive around and see a few things and then like, I should maybe come back more often. Cause there's not enough time in the day right now.
Not enough light in the day.
Enough light in the day, yeah.
Take heart, the days are getting longer.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for me? If not, I'm gonna get out of here.
Thanks, Steve.
Alright.
Does that take care of all our guests? Well, we're just gonna start at the top of their own new business and designate official depository and official publication. Just by motion, Bennington State Bank and Lucasilman News.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I do. That way Will can prove he's here. I'll second that, Jennifer.
You know what, do you know what he means?
He just made a motion to have Bennington State Bank as our official bank and Lucasilman News as official newspaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks. I didn't know if I had to be two different ones.
Oh, you mean two different, up to the court.
As long as there's a motion, that's amazing.
Well, a motion designate Bennington State Bank and Lucasilman News as official depository and official publication in that order. A few thousand and nineteen.
I reseconded, I'm gonna dis-call it.
Anyway, any discussion, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
The update on the grant is just that we're moving forward with the bids and we should, weather permitting, should see progress, I would say, February, just based on the weather more than anything.
Okay.
So, the first five bids have, have gone forward and been accepted, a couple of them by an alternate bid, but as we, we, when we awarded, when you awarded those, we ordered a first award and then an alternate, so two of them were by one of the alternates, so. But that's, and I guess we can address the nest on the agenda. Um, I talked with the accountant at length at the end and we feel like it would be good to create a grant fund to funnel that money through, so it's separate from your general and your other funds. It is basically general, I mean, you can run it through your general fund, but it.
Is that mainly for accounting purposes?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's really just.
Well, we hashed that at one time and I thought it was the best.
Right, but I don't think we ever made a motion to create the fund and I actually have to have a motion to, in order to have the fund.
Is that a, like, we have to set up another checking account?
No, it, 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 funds are, it's one checking account, it's just, it's really, yeah, it's just to show on the books that each, that there's designated money. And so for that grant fund, it's, you receive money from the grant and it immediately goes out, so it's really just a place for the money going out.
It's just a box in the line.
But it all actually goes to the same account, I would think.
This is just kind of a formality.
Yes, but two, two.
It's an accounting formality.
What happens is we are budgeted, like so much for the water, so much for the general fund, so much. You don't wanna go outside those budgetary guidelines, so, and that just makes all that money go to that fund instead of the other.
Do you need to?
I just need a motion to create.
You don't have to bring up any written wording? I, I mean.
No.
That we approve, but just.
A motion to create a grant fund? I mean, and because it's, all it is is money coming in and out, it's. it just designates that money to, through that fund, so I don't have, it doesn't have to be included in the budgets of the other funds. Does that make sense?
My move, we create a grant fund for
Grants.
Um, for the grant, for the money.
Money awarded in a grant situation. Money allotted by grants.
I'll second it.
Or, and, and accounting.
That's all it is.
That's right.
A motion and a second to create a grant fund. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Put the same sign. Uh, as far as motor grader. Commissioner. Can you remember if it was since the last meeting or before the last?
It was after the last.
Went and visited with them, just told them, you know, our thoughts, see what they would be open to. Commission as a whole indicated a really willingness to work with us. Actually offered a, an option that I hadn't even considered, uh, possibly that we would trade them our unit towards, and then they would take ours and just put it on the purple wave like they were gonna do. Now, I haven't heard back from them since you did, were you at the commission meeting today?
Yeah, but it was all executive, I went and I took care of the library business. And then everything, I, they were in executive session when I got there, they broke, come out of that, they took care of a couple things, swore in.
It's not like they relayed anything to you or bring back.
No.
Okay, and that's all right. Uh, so, I have not heard from them, other than, uh, they did have someone gonna come uh, look at the units, I don't, like I say, Terry, I don't know if the guy was ever here, I really don't.
I, I don't think there had been anyone, cause surely something like that, they would announce themselves.
I did give them the model number and the serial number, so they, of our grader, so they had it. Uh, and like I say, we talked, kinda like we talked here about, uh, winter looking, like it might be a little tough. But like I say, as of right now, I have not heard back from them, I thought about going today, but kinda glad I didn't from what you're saying. But anyway, uh, they, they were very, uh, like I say, willing to work with us one way or another. Uh, in fact, Al Joe made the comment, he said, well, we can't give it to you, and I said, well, I never expected you to. At which point he asked me, he said, so what do you guys got, and I told him, and I said, why, you wanna trade, he goes, yeah, we might. Well, I was being flippant.
Right.
But he was serious, and it's like, well, I never even entertained that idea, that basically our unit could count against what we might end up paying them for.
Right.
That's a good idea.
So anyway, that's where we're at, we're at least we had that discussion, so basically waiting to hear back from them. So, uh, I don't know, the next one.
Oh, the, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I have to have all the previous forms for everybody, um.
Okay. Uh, you guys, do we wanna review these ordinances a little bit, or I? I really don't think from what he I, I can see where it could be construed as a misunderstanding, but.
I don't know, I don't have a copy, I just have the nation's ordinance.
I still think our ordinance there is fairly clear, although, uh, you know, like I say, per, you know, we have trucks come in and out and get unloaded, Cashway sits on Main and unloads, of course, that ain't a a huge truck, but, uh.
Well, Main Street would classify differently if I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understand.
No, but it doesn't, in the version I have, I have, um, the lawyer's opinion on that, because that was brought up a few years ago. And no, the city, that is still a city street and it is still under the same jurisdiction and ordinance, so.
So does, does a city ordinance trump the state highway jurisdictions?
Well, just in, in terms of they can be there for an hour, but no more.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, I, I'm not, not that it trumps it, it's just that it's, it's in the, it's in our city.
It's inclusive, yeah.
And, and you have to remember that the state only is responsible for the middle of the highway. So the rest of that is city, so that, and that's where they would probably, well, except for like when they, like Cashway and some of those unload on the but most of the time that would mean that they'd be off to the side, which would fall under city's jurisdiction, so. I don't even know, who was that guy that was here? Uh, Steven Ammons.
And what does he want? Is, did he buy something?
He lives in town now, he bought that Vicky and Vicky.
Larry.
Uh, Larry.
Vicky and Larry.
Turner, Turner.
Yeah.
Lee.
Anyway, and so they moved to town fairly recently.
And they have a.
They had a trailer sitting outside their house for a little over a week.
Okay.
A tractor trailer.
What they were doing is they purchased basically two entire houses. And part of her occupation is to itemize and then sell it on eBay or online sites. And what they were doing is they were, you know, piece by piece inventorying and unloading, so. But yeah, you can fit two whole houses in the fifty-two foot box trailer.
If you can't, you better get rid of some stuff. Okay, well, that, let that go. I'd like, I'd like to keep the wage review to the very end.
Yeah.
I guess all that being said, come up here and give us an update. Well, I wanted to make the point to tell Jackie if I'm gonna be out of here.
Gotta get J C home, he's got a big game tomorrow. Sure. If you don't win, you play at home, cause you don't wanna play at home.
Just a couple of things, I guess, let's see, it looks like, uh, I got a couple quotes for the blue tractor, for a blade, and I'll be honest with you, uh, let's see. We, they said for it, uh, they don't recommend going over an eight foot pole behind a blade for the tractor. And believe it or not, that's what we have already, and I, I just wanted to get back with you where I was told to like look into it. And, and the information that I got was in informational, where if it were a true four-wheel drive tractor, then it would be able to handle a heavier, bigger blade, but he says where it's a, even though it's a eighty horsepower, it's on the lighter end of, uh, you know, they gave out two options, and they said that, yeah, this.
Did they just designate it as a front wheel assist, if they're a true four-wheel drive?
Yes, it's a, just a front wheel assist tractor and said that if you start getting any bigger or any heavier, uh, it'll be more than what it could handle, type of a thing, and for where we only put it on during the winter, that blade that's on it is just fine, you know, because like its main purpose is actually just to pull the bush hog really. Uh, I mean, you know, to mow with, and then light duty with the front end bucket, and that's just fine, uh, in my opinion. Did you want me to go more?
Did you ask, is Lance who you talked to?
Uh, yes. Yeah, it was Lance, yeah. Lance Hoffman. You know, type thing.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's table it for now. I might call down and talk to him.
Lamb prints makes them, they make it basically.
Yeah. Well, what he's got here.
I know a guy that works there.
This is a bid on land type.
Oh, it is a bid on land, okay.
Otherwise, I, I ordered a couple, uh, which needed to be done, I ordered a couple blades and bolts for the bush hog.
Okay.
Well, it's not a bush hog brand, but whatever, whatever the rotary motor.
Three-point rotary motor.
Yeah, uh, you know, so, cause like one of the blades looks like this and that's why it looks like you're mowing uh, unlevel, it's not cause the deck's unlevel.
So that's what this hundred and thirty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was a, yeah, that was thrown in at the same time, cause I said I do need a set of blades, keep it separate from the quotes on the other two things. And that was for sure on the blades, that was just with it. And they're on order, just when, they'll call and I'll go pick them up whenever, that's from Millsworth. The can equipped. That's on that, on the subject of, uh, the blue tractor thing. Let's see, otherwise, just working in the shop, uh, over there getting stuff. Yeah, can weld again, uh, that hooked in, uh, and we spent some time getting, we got the big compressor out. That, that was an ordeal, uh, got that out of there and set over where it's gonna set, and it's just a matter of wiring it in. Um, worked on a couple nee- meter pits, uh, this week and last week, uh.
The one on Main Street.
He's good to go.
Good to go, good.
Yeah, good to go, and, let's see, uh, let's see. Well, uh, I've encrestened, uh, uh, last Saturday, ran the, uh, road grader all day. Uh, Meitler, I did call him, he, he ran up one street and, and this and that, said, do you have any questions, it's time for me to jump. And so it was like the rest of the day, rest of the town, all the streets, that was me, so if there was anything mowed over or around. Or a galjout in the street, that was me.
I think that's a little day than the D O two gives.
But it, uh, that thing works you, wow.
Slept good that night, didn't you?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Heater does work and it either burns you out or you shut it off and it's like a freeze box. Yeah, but, but, uh, and then Frederick, uh, uh, ran the dresser all day that day, and I mopped up whatever today. Uh, cause they're talking of snow, again, they don't know what measurable, but they are talking about it could be like the day after Thanksgiving, or that Sunday after, uh, the channel twelve people were saying, you know, then wind, and then an Arctic punch in the gut, you know, after that. So anyhow, that, that equipment's running, um, the only other question I've got is, uh, do I gotta ask, like, meter reading this week, uh, there's still a lot of snow coverage and or it's gonna be cold and or snowing, uh, is that something that we just talk about later, or is that?
So we can do estimates, the only ones that I would say for sure would be the school, the sale barn, um, those ones where we have high readings.
Sure, and that's not a problem.
And then the one where we just had a leak, I think those would be the three that
Okay.
You would need to, to read, other than that, I, we can do an estimate.
Okay.
Your, your, uh, average.
Not our impressive editor.
I mean.
Cause that was something I honestly didn't know.
We haven't had to, but I know in the past they've had.
I think Rachel.
And I know we talked about that today, it was, that was something I honestly didn't know if that's something that you bring up in front of the council.
It was good to know, but if that's the case, so be it.
Yeah.
Cause it's not, cause I, you know, don't wanna walk, it's just. Look and it's like, oh, it's back there, and you're raking the wrong area of the leaves, uh, yeah, let alone put some snow on it.
That's why it is, some of them would be, could be frozen, you get just enough water, I mean, you wouldn't be able to get without a hammer.
And some of them were that way.
Right.
Like last month or two, some were that way, even though there wasn't any snow covering, you just, you, you thumped and or get that thing unbolted type of thing, there was several of those. That's just a part of it, you know, no boo-boo, but that, I think that's pretty much it, that I can think of, is there anything on your guys'?
No, thought you guys did a really good job this time, did a good job last time, too.
I was gonna say.
Yes, thank you.
My wife was tickled when Frederick came by and dressed things up. Instead of the berm. Cause I know maybe a day I had everything down to the street, and then here comes Lily. And he just waved it as he drove by.
I can do you one better, but we'll have to wait till after the meeting.
But positively speaking, there was a person or two, positively speaking, uh, Saturday that like did flag me down and say, hey, I'm gonna move my vehicles, would you be willing to turn around, and then a couple swipes, well, heck yeah, and I did. It, uh, and that was in two spots.
It's called community relations.
Cause I thought, yeah, as it was like, I don't ever see, yeah, it's like, okay, that'll work.
They like Terry.
So.
Yeah, I have, I've heard him make compliments.
Well, I didn't wanna sound rosy, but just like, well, there was some positive, cause usually, you know, you try to not like berm right in front of where they just freshly scooped out, and I told her, go back up that one little stub street and dress that out, like, okay.
Yeah, you did, you did a nice job, thank you. We need to add a boy to that.
Thank you, but.
Get ready, here comes Saturday.
Here comes a, usually there's, there's something out of the woodwork. I'll have water reports next month, you know what I'm saying, the cool looking graphy things and but at least I'll have the tally for you guys next month.
No recurring issues down at the list station?
No, and, and on that, um, as long as you keep that basket clean, there are any problems. And you don't kick a can, you just keep an eye on, just, you just open the hatch on a Monday and a Friday.
Okay, you check it twice a week?
Yeah, you just know to, uh, when you need to clean it and or, uh, do it, you know, or it'll. Cool, but otherwise, it's not a big deal, you don't go in the hole, you just rinse up, you know, clean out the basket, go back down, but so far, it's been like twice a month, that's not a big deal.
Twice a month.
To clean out the basket.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's not a big deal.
Haven't had any more of your false alarms.
That was two weeks ago, now I learned my lesson on that, cause I thought, I didn't wanna clean it, you know, I looked at it Friday and I thought, I can kick this can cause it was, uh, whatever, holiday, Monday, I don't remember, I thought, well, I can kick it down, I thought it was cold. Then, and I thought, I can kick this to Wednesday, well, Tuesday it called. I guess that was the first.
Yeah, New Year's Day.
I went and hushed it up and, and I hope this will go to tomorrow, no? No, forty minutes later is like, uh huh, okay. I learned that lesson, if it looks like you need to clean it, you got time and it's nice on a Friday, you do it. And that's not a big deal. Otherwise, it's been going okay down there on the list.
Good.
Uh, you know.
But we still wanna get that wiring done at some time.
Yes. Yes, cause there's been no alarms yet on that, and I know.
Keep that on your list.
Yeah, cause I know. Yeah, cause I know, uh, the operator of the past told me that sometime, you know, every once in a blue moon, it will call you for like no power or whatever and it's cause of all those, I know, in the box.
Just so you know, I lay awake at night worrying about that cluster.
After you've seen it.
Yeah, you can't unsee it.
And that's wiring.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, it'll lick your fingers.
For a government installation, it's, it's a glaring like, whoa. Anyway, but now as get along down the road here, let's get that.
Yeah.
When it works, so, all right. Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
Will, you got anything?
Nope.
I just heard compliments on the snow removal, so, you know, you always, you should always share good news, good job too.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Cool.
Did you get your snow removal by our house?
Yeah.
Do what?
Uh, grader came by two or three times, it seemed like.
Yeah, we had good snow removal by our house. Just couldn't get out of my driveway, once we got out there, it was good.
Oh, that was on Louis, Louis, Louis out there, Louis.
Longley, you got anything?
No, I sure don't.
No. Didn't put it on there, but I did try to call Marshall about the insurance in regards to the building situation, he has not returned my phone call, I said, yes, so.
Oh, the fair board.
The building at the fairgrounds, so, um, and also, um, just, I didn't know if it made any difference in regards to the library as well, but like I said, he hasn't, as of yet, gotten back to me, but I know he will, cause he usually comes in February, so.
Okay.
Um.
So you have not talked to him?
I called, but I just hadn't got a response back yet. I emailed and then I called and so far he hasn't had a chance to come back to me.
That brings something to mind for me.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we talked about some of this vegetation that's getting out of hand, like along the alleys and stuff, trees, unplanted, unwanted.
Right.
Uh, you know, a lot of cities have a tree chipper, so you don't have to haul branches, put it behind your dump truck and make mulch out of it. Uh, I happened to see someone, Purple Wave, that were like, wow, that's cheap, but that's the kinda item that if you get a chance, ask him if that would.
Okay.
Cause that, I mean, some people consider them real dangerous.
Yeah.
Only if you hold on to the tree while it's going in.
Good.
But, uh, but that did come to mind, ask him if, like, it would be prohibitive if we were required or something like that. What, I know we haven't talked about this, cause it just.
And Steve, you're talking the big commercial trailer type, right?
Yeah, has its own self-contained motor on it, you know, like I say, a lot of cities, what they'll do, they'll have a, have a truck about the size of the Chevy dump truck.
Right.
They've got a.
What's that one business that comes around?
Aspeland.
Yeah, they, they trim, yeah, you like what they got.
They, they, they trim for the electric companies.
Yeah.
And they'll do, I mean, for anybody if you want.
But what I'm thinking about is, you know, we're talking about trying to clear some of this vegetation out of the alleyways to help our sewer system. And like I say, you know, the big difference between just chucking them in that tree chipper versus having to make load after load after load through the dump with the Dodge with branches, so it's just something to think about.
Or versus, God get a bid from Aspeland.
Well.
I mean, I don't know, as I said, you'd have to compare the two. Whether you'd have your own, is it worth having your own or contract with them to do that?
Insurance issue, insurance and liabilities.
Before we get into that, you know, we really need to go back and like, you know, Dean's involved with visiting with the property owners about, you know, I keep going back to this deal over here, when we had that flooded basement, I walked down that alley and I mean, the vegetation was just unreal, small wonder we got tree roots growing in the sewer lines, so.
Well, but it doesn't, I mean, some of that goes back to those people are not keeping that property up, so, I mean.
But Dean also mentioned too, you know, about us, we have a right of way through there, at least maintain our right of way.
Right.
So, and nothing ever happened with that? Those people never have contacted you or, I mean.
What do you mean?
With all that, in that basement?
They have, uh, put in an application to have the house.
Demo, not.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
So on that note, where, where are we at? We got, how many rehabs do we have to have before we can do a demo?
Three finished.
And we've got?
Five.
Five.
In, in process, so.
Good.
So then the demos, do they first come, first serve, same way?
Mm-hmm.
Who's first?
On the demo, uh, right now I only have two returned application, that mean one of them and the other one.
For demo?
There'd be more.
Yeah.
But that's all that's actually in right now, but they were, some of those people had a demo and a rehab and they were more concerned with the rehab than they were with the demo.
Okay.
But I don't have any doubts about the paperwork being completed, it just hasn't come in yet.
So that property and what's the other property?
Ronnie's, huh?
Dennis never asked about his pink house?
Um, no. There was, there's been a little confusion for people about the fact that the initial process was to prove was not the actual application, it was just to get the grant and now they have to fill out.
Have to reapply almost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's, that's gonna be a little bit of an education process for people, so they thought they were done and we're not, so.
All right. Well, nobody has anything else, anything else?
Yeah, the other thing is, uh, one, I don't know if you're gonna talk about it at all, but one of the things I, that Steve and I talked about is that, um, as of right now, there's no one, like Terry has a backup, if something were to happen to Terry or Terry could not perform his job, there's somebody that's learning his job. At this point in time, there's no one that could come in for me if foreseeable needed to. Um, and so we just discussed the treasurer position, possibly making that into a position that could come in, you know, either if I was gone or if I'm on vacation or just be able to know what to do.
Do some basics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At, at minimum. I did visit with Kathy and she does not interested in doing any more than what she does right now as treasurer, um, and she said she perfectly understood that you needed to find somebody else. I did speak briefly with Rachel and asked her if that's something at all she would be interested in and she said she would consider it, she's not committing to anything, but she would possibly consider it, so, um, depending on how it was.
Do you think things have changed dramatically to the point that she'd have as much trouble getting back to speed as anybody else knew?
Probably fifty-fifty. I mean, she, it would be easier for her because she's, but yeah, there's a lot that's, I mean, a lot of stuff has moved to online.
Right, right.
Reporting and, and there's just a lot, and, and it seems like each year there's one other, there's more to do, um, statewide, state statute-wise, whatever. I mean, like, all the water reports are now done online, we have to, if we try to file them by paper and not do them online, it costs twenty dollars per page.
Gee.
So that's kind of motivating.
I put a note on the paper and give them back.
Right.
That's how it works.
Anyhow, so I mean, there's just a lot of that stuff that's.
It's motivation to.
Over time, um, but yeah, it wouldn't, the, the only thing I would, I would say that if, Rachel might be a different situation, if you hired somebody else, it, like as of right now, what Kathy gets is twenty-five dollars a month, if they're actually gonna be able to do my job or be here when I'm gone, I would say that they're gonna have to be in here at least once a month or twice a month. I mean, and give them a reason to, to take the position, so that's just something to think about, it's something that they have to move on, but I just wanted to mention that it's something we kind of visited about and I visited with Kathy and Rachel about. It was something Rachel had talked about when I started, she said there really should be somebody that knows what I do in here.
How about Mrs. Neal, the new one?
That's a no.
Really?
Yeah, well, she's.
She's ending her career in Mead.
She gets paid about twenty-five dollars an hour, twenty-four dollars an hour to do this job in Mead, um, and so she would, I'm not saying, I'm not gonna speak for her, I'm just saying she wouldn't take the pay cut, I'm not saying, but she's looking for a full-time position.
Oh, okay.
When she, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
They bought Randy Schrader's house.
They bought Randy Schrader's house.
Tiffany Neal is a city clerk for the city of Mead.
It's, what, three days a week?
Yeah, right now, it's something like that, yeah, something like that.
She's training someone.
She's training someone to replace her, um, but.
They're just gonna move back after basketball season or something.
Yeah, no, no, she just.
No, they're too close to the lake.
Yeah, she really like it here, I think, so, anyway, but yeah, she, I did visit with her about it.
Good.
But she's, like I said, looking for something full-time, so.
So with that all being said, if you guys think there's somebody or know somebody might be a good candidate or interested, like, maybe give Jennifer a heads up.
Like, cause it would be something very part-time, so anyway, we can discuss it more later, I just wanted to put it in your head and you can think about it if you have thoughts on it, um.
Okay.
And then, uh, we'll go to financials, I guess, and I can talk about the one other ish, issue that, um, I, uh, on the phone line, so the income for the month of December was twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one, expenses, thirty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars, and, um, the warrant, um, the, the one thing I wanted to talk about was the phone bill, um, the, in the expenditure process, and partly because of, I, I wanted my phone line moved so that I could have my phone at my desk, um, so when they did that, they moved her internet line to this wall, they moved my phone line to this wall as well, consolidated some things, um, instead of paying, each of us paying a fee for them to come, we did it all at one.
Yeah.
So that's on the phone bill, it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, cause they get seventy-five dollars an hour.
Wow.
So I didn't know if you wanted me to split that and give a bill to the library if, or if you wanted to just pay it as the city, it doesn't matter, I mean, part of it was, they did move my phone line, um, as well.
What part of that, underneath the grant, as far as remodel over there or?
Well, technically, yeah, they would be using grant funds to pay for that portion of it, um.
But by the same token, we've got, which remains to be addressed completely, we have some issues that they ended up working on the building that wasn't.
Yeah, that wasn't originally planned, so.
It's a twisted racket, so I said.
The whole, the whole deal is a hundred and seventy-nine?
To, yeah, for, for having everything moved.
I'd say we got it.
Okay. And then I get to have the, I guess it's the end due, but that was taken care of today, so.
If you guys are okay with that.
Yes, I went and waived the fees for the, the commissioners forgave or whatever, waived the fees for the construction debris, what was removed out of the library, yes.
A couple of times with construction debris and so.
So they, they waived the fees.
We gotta help each other out whenever we can.
Yeah, so, but is there any other questions on the warrants or the financials?
Yeah, the commissioner said that was the simplest thing they had to do that day.
That was their.
I think it was like that.
That was their reason.
Or if there's anything else for me, I guess?
I'll make a motion, we accept financials as granted.
Second.
Okay, second to accept financials, those presented in the discussion. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion, Terry. All right, uh, we need to review wages for city employees, uh. How long do we wait?
Well.
Do you need that motion?
Do what?
If you're gonna go and go to the S R M I S, do, or you don't?
That's where I go, yeah, I'm looking, I go around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
I need to recuse myself, so.
I'm part of it.
Part of it, yes.
Well, we, we'll say.
If you wanna go home, you can go home, years passed, sometime, for the most part, as I recall, Louis always, we, we got done and he left.
Yeah, he didn't come back.
He was gonna live with whatever we decided in.
Yeah.
Need to use the restroom, we're gonna. You don't need me, uh, back after.
No.
No, we're done, we're done. Okay, yeah. Thanks, Terry.
Keep up the work, okay?
Cool.
Although, can't say the same for you.
Okay. I can't leave anymore till we're done.
Yeah.
You gotta write everything down.
We, we, we gotta come back and go back into open session. Uh, fifteen minutes? This guy could've looked way back to see what, uh, fifteen, we can always go more if need be.
Yeah, if we go fourteen, that'll take us right to eight-twenty.
Or eight-ten, is that right?
Cause I got, I'm just gonna phone call.
So eight-ten, and we're going for fifteen, is it ten? What'd you say?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Rachel always wants to turn the radio up for a laugh.
I'll probably go use the restroom with Terry, not with Terry, that's.
It made perfect sense, nobody took it anyway.
Uh, okay, do you have the motion by?
I'll make it. I'll make the motion, we go into a fifteen-minute executive session to, which one? To this, uh, review wages for employees, that's what our intent is.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion, Terry.
Watch, but I don't need hot hydrogen.
As long as the water doesn't freeze over there and you, I think we'll be okay.
All right, we'll come back into regular session, uh, I mean, spent three sessions of executive session.
Ronnie, you blotted over. I would like to present a motion that, uh, we give Terry Ayers a one dollar an hour raise, and in continuation, that we give Jennifer Hill a one dollar an hour raise, and that we would address the same, uh, topic at, uh, our annual budget meeting, so I, I don't know how to designate that we talk salaries at budget.
Well, I'd just say.
Yeah.
I really think that.
I don't, that probably doesn't need to be in the budget.
I'd say in July.
Okay.
Really, that's what it.
That's probably when we start reviewing, but.
Yes, I would say July, just say July.
In July.
Contingency for budget review.
Yeah, I mean, that way we know what we have and where we're at.
We have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
The motion is second to give Terry and Jennifer a one dollar an hour raise. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion, Terry.
I think so.
Anything else?